Good evening, everybody. I'd like to make a motion to reconvene into open session. Do I have a second to reconvene? Mark, all those in favor? That's unanimous, and we are back in open session. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals this evening. Margaret Biswanger, a graduate and former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Leonard Cummins, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Walter Sickler, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Theresa McCandless, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We're doing things a little out of order tonight, so comments from the audience? We don't have any speakers signed up for tonight, but as always, we welcome the public to come forward and give any input to the board they see necessary. Moving on to Board of Education Committee reports, do we have any committee announcements, Mark?
I know we have received the URE1 BOCES policy manual, and we are currently going on yet.
Mr. Crabtree, your OCMBOCES board report.
Okay, again, thank you each month that I can report on what's happening at under Courtland Madison BOCES. A few things that have happened in the last month is that we had an LPN graduation at Roxborough Middle School, and thank you for letting us use the facility. It was wonderful, and we had sixty nurses graduate. Our other program was at the main campus, and that was our adult education graduation. And there's been an upswing in the number of young people and elderly people that are up there that are going back to school and getting adult ed. And then I want to thank the North Syracuse Central School District for their participation in the OCMBOCES Equity Catalyst Program at West Hill. I know Chris was there, Don Keegan was there for both days. There were a lot of superintendents and board members, and it was an excellent conference on DEI inequality. So, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Bowles.
Thank you. I just wanna just fumble with my words here because this is my last board meeting. But I came into the education field because I wanted to make a difference, change the lives of students. I was in the Utica City School District my first seven years and here the last twenty-seven. And the one thing that has happened that was an unexpected consequence was I wanted to change the lives of students, but for the students, the families, the parents, they changed my life. I've learned a lot, I've seen a lot, and my children went to school here, and truly, it has changed me as a person, and I wouldn't do it any different. And I do know that I was leaving a little bit sooner than anticipated, but the students, the parents, the staff, the families have been absolutely amazing, and the board. Sorry about that, but it has just been, it's been my home, and I consider all of you and the staff my family. And there are times where you come to work, and sometimes there are things that we disagree, but that's what families do. But in the long run, we take care of each other, and that has happened for me and my family, my children. And I want to thank all of you from the bottom of my heart, the staff and the community, because North Syracuse, I feel, is in a good place moving forward. And with all the changes that we've been making and all the things that we've been doing, I'm excited and looking for someone to take the torch and continue moving us forward. And I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have any Board of Education comments?
I promise I'll be quick, but I just wanted to say Dan was in the administration when I was a student, and I got to know him as an excellent administrator then, and then now I got to know him as a colleague while I served on the board, and it's gonna be very tough to fill his shoes. He's done a lot of excellent things for this district, and I just wanted to say thanks for everything. And a lot of community members have expressed the same to me, so that's it.
Well, we supposed, I'm gonna do that at the end.
Oh. Okay, I'd just like to say thank you, Dan. I think you truly have left this district better than when you found it. I think the fact that you constantly tried to make the school district better every day says an awful lot about you and who you are. Thank you for being here, and we are truly gonna miss you. Thank you.
Any more, we're gonna talk about Dan at the end.
We're gonna talk about him again. Then, okay, then I'll go when we do again. I might have a lot to say.
Board member comments? You don't have to.
All right, so to go back on what Mr. Crabtree said about the Equity Catalyst, I was actually there, and me and my organization called SCORE talked about, you know, educating the educators. And we kind of gave, we did a youth panel, and we talked, and it was great to see how many teachers and staff members were there and ready to participate and, you know, learn. So it was, yeah, it was great. Like OCMBOCES did a really good job putting that together, and I was very excited to participate. So, yeah, I have to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Routine action items, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting on August 5, 2024. Do I have a motion, Mr. Crabtree, second from Dr. Kramer? Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. I'd like to group B, C, and D together if I can have a motion to place those items together as a group. Beth, Xavier, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus, I saw a lot of technology items on this as we replace things. Textbooks, things of that nature. Do I have a motion to put that before us? Josh, Paul, any questions?
Could I ask just to mention all the technology items? I noticed a variety of things that Chromebooks, printers, things I didn't know what they did. They are truly non-marketable? That just surprised me.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not questioning it, I just was.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the technology products, the secondary market for them is is almost nonexistent for.
So smart boards are passe, I see.
Yeah, well, we, and I will, kudos to the district for getting so many years out of the smart boards that we did. We use them right down to the, to the, to the end, and they've been in need of replacing for a little bit, a little while. Our strategy is to send those to the recycler with all the other technology products and make sure they get disposed of properly. There's just no secondary market for them.
Thanks, I just, I noticed a lot of those. Do we have chalk still?
No chalk.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Discussion action items, the approval of the district, of the draft district level safety plan. I have a motion to place that before us. Matt and Xavier, any questions? All those in favor? Next one we have will be a roll call, and this is the resolution to establish the tax rates. Do I have a motion to place that before us, Mr. Crabtree, Josh?
I'd like to say something about I'd just like the taxpayers and also our audience to know that when you voted in May, you voted on a lump sum of a budget, not on a tax increase or decrease. It then goes to the town, and so the town of Clay and the town of Cicero and the town of Salina is where you get your tax bills. So I've taken my phone off the hook. Call me, call somebody else, but just to let you know that it's, the board knows this, that we just vote on a lump sum, and we approximate what the, but the taxes are gonna be. We really don't know. Thank you.
Jill?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Right. Next item is the resolution for the authorization of warrants. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Mark, Paul, any questions?
Sure, the warrant is each town's share of our tax levy. We're using this, when you authorize this, you're authorizing the town to collect those on the district's behalf.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Resolution to approve tax collection and deposit agreement. Do I have a motion to place that before us, Beth and Josh? Any questions? Favor? Resolution to create additional service providers of the North Syracuse Early Education Program. This has been discussed. Do I have a motion to place that before us? Josh, Xavier, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Consideration of the contract award recommendation. This is for the dual video board package at CNS High School. I believe this will be for the front signage, correct?
Exactly, these will be the boards that are gonna be right in the lobby. Jim, I apologize, I apologize, yep.
Do I have a motion to place that before, Beth and Matt, all those in favor? Thank you. Next, we have a scoreboard scholarship, or sponsorship, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to accept that sponsorship payment? Josh, Mark, all those in favor? Question?
Send thank you notes, does Tim send thank you notes to these people that are giving us money? I know their name gets up there and stuff, but I would, I would think it would be nice to have some kind of thank you note if come out maybe at The Athletic? Okay, yeah.
All those in favor? Thank you. Recommendation to approve the amended 2425 calendar to reflect region's testing date changes. I'm sure there'll be another one at some point. Do I have a motion to place that before us?
This, this was on the state.
Beth, Josh, did I see your hand? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And next, we are changing the date of the January 6, 2025 board meeting to January 13, 2025. An email went out about this the other day. Do I have a motion to place that before us, Beth and Mr. Crabtree, any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. There is a retirement that I would like to acknowledge tonight. Harry Hanke, an automotive mechanic, is retiring with twenty-seven point three years of service. So I would like on behalf of the board to wish him a long, happy, and healthy retirement. Do we need an executive session before we take our personnel? Do I have a motion to accept personnel A as submitted? Mark, Xavier, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Support staff, any personnel report, do I have a motion to accept support staff as presented? Beth, Josh? Questions, all those in favor?
I have, I have a question on that, just a clarification. In this, we have four SROs from the sheriffs, and we've gone back and forth with information on the Friday letter, and I still confused, so recently you called them secondary employees, which I don't know what that is. When we go back to the August 2nd letter, they're still employees of the, well, the states, sorry, August 16th stated they're secondary employees, but we're reimbursing the county.
Yeah, so I apologize, we probably could have done a better job describing that.
Just to go back to the second, I mean, it mentions that, okay, the waiver expired, correct? I don't know if there's an exemption to that somewhere for law enforcement or not. I'm a little confused, so that expired. They're not our employees, they're secondary employees, whatever that is, but we're reimbursing the county. And the county, they said the comptroller's office doesn't monitor their exceeding the waiver allowed, allowed, the allowed amount over the waiver, unless they're working for the same employee they retired from, which when I go back to the early August letter, there's still Onondaga County Sheriff, so I'm totally confused, and I support it, believe me, I want resource officers. I just want to make sure we're not liable for anything, that's my main thing. The name's kind of convoluted, I don't understand, I don't think there's a workaround, the lack of a waiver.
I think this is convoluted, so I apologize for, we probably could have done a better job describing it. So just for everybody's benefit, previously, prior to this coming school year, the law enforcement had waivers on their compensation, that retired law enforcement had waivers on their compensation. Those were not renewed. So as a result, if we want to have retired policemen, we have seven of those, by the way, in the district, work for us in our elementary schools and at the North Syracuse Early Education Program is the, is the seventh. We would not be able to have them, if we hired them through Onondaga County, we would have to hold, we would have to stick to the $35,000 salary cap. And so what's been explained to me is that the way the state is enforcing the cap is they're, they're enforcing it for anybody who goes back to work for the same agency. So this is why we don't have the problem at Cicero Police. So we have three school resource officers that we get from the Cicero Police Department, and none of them retired from the Cicero Police Department. So they're hired So they're hired by the Cicero Police Department, and they can make more than this $35,000 cap because they weren't employees of Cicero Police. The Anadaga County Sheriff, the four that we hire from them are in fact retired Anadaga County sheriffs. So their salary is capped if they work for the Sheriff's Department. Relative to the secondary employee, there's actually a thing called a secondary employment agreement that we would enter into with the county once the board approved this. And these are these people are still deputized. They're still Anadaga County Sheriff's deputies. They wear that uniform. They are trained and supervised by the county. And so the moment their work in our schools becomes police work, more than maybe the work of a guard, they're under the protection and guidance of of the Anadaga County Sheriff's Department as their primary employer. And as you guys know, it's not unusual for us to get involved in activities after hours with the Sheriff's deputies. And so while they're Anadaga County, while they're wearing those uniforms, their their primary employment is through the county, and we are paying them as secondary employers. So what are we paying? We're paying their hourly rate. We're paying their FICA and their payroll, you know, our sheriff payroll taxes. And and we're paying some miscellaneous expenses for their operating in that capacity. Anadaga County covers the anytime they're actually operating as a sheriff's deputy in their work year. And I know that's that's confusing. We actually took this and sent it to our our insurance company to make sure that we understood the liability. And the feedback we've gotten is that this is that they don't expect the district to incur any additional liability associated with that, and that's the same representation we've gotten from the county as well. So that's why we're proceeding with hiring for Sheriff's deputies and putting them on our payroll. Now, I had said that in the Friday letter, the cost wouldn't be any different. If they were employed by the county, they would bill us the hourly rate, the payroll tax portion, and any of the expenses. So literally, it's instead of paying the county for those people, we're going to pay them directly. And what does that do for us? It allows us to it allows us to operate with consistent staffing in those buildings and not be held accountable to the waiver. Sorry for that.
No, I appreciate that. I think it's important for the board to understand that. I'll just add that, and it's not on us. I think the waiver was there for a reason. I'm disappointed the waiver wasn't continued. I mean, this has been a problem since SRO has been brought into buildings. Law enforcement tend to retire before 65. And so school districts all across the state have had issues hiring them before waivers were waivers basically given across the board recently. And you see that now, of course, the teaching, they extended that year by year because there's a shortage there. So I don't understand. I mean, I looked around online. I believe it was a Senate bill. I think it was an Assembly bill. I don't know if it failed in the governor's office or what, but I think that's something we should point out again because we wouldn't be having this discussion if the waiver was still in place, which it should be. These people are few and far between. It's a skill set we need in every building. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. And administrative report C. Do I have a motion to put that before us? Beth, Mark, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have acknowledgement, recognition, and celebration of Superintendent Bowles. So before we get up to the board, I'd like to welcome Jesse from Senator Mannion's office, who has something for him. So if you'd like to come up, there's a microphone for you if you have anything you'd like to say.
Hi, everyone. I don't know which way to face. Okay, so I will face that way. Sorry to have my back to you. So I'm Jesse. I am from Senator Mannion's office here on his behalf. Unfortunately, he was not able to be here himself. But I think it's kind of nice that I'm here on his behalf. I've been participating in the North Syracuse School Board Legislative Committee for the past couple of years and gotten to know everyone there and also gotten to know Superintendent Bowles. So it's really nice to be able to be here to celebrate him. And on behalf of the Senator and our whole office, I have a proclamation for him. I'm not going to read the whole thing because it's a bunch of whereas and legalese, but I'll let him read that and have it framed for posterity here. And just congratulations, and I hope you have the best retirement ever. I know you deserve it. After all you've done for the district.
Thank you, Jesse, and please thank the Senator for us. Dan, on behalf of the board, we got a nice fireman, if you want to open that up. So we, you know, this doesn't even begin to express the gratitude that we all have for you. I mean, you are the embodiment of what the North Syracuse Central School District is. Personally, it has been an absolute honor to work with you over the last 13 years. The students, the staff, our community have been blessed to have you. You have steered this district in the direction that I am very proud to see that we have gone in. Your successor is going to have incredibly large shoes to fill. I'm going to miss working with you dearly. I've never met somebody who puts literally everybody else before himself. And I don't think there's anybody in this room and anybody in this school district that can say that that you haven't always thought about others before yourself. So on behalf of the board, I we present this to you, but on a personal note, thank you for everything that you've done for me and for all of us. So thank you.
This is outstanding. I am humbled. I asked my wife, there's not very often that I don't have something to say, so this is a time where it's kind of hard. I look into the audience and see many, many faces in the different areas in the district where I've traveled. I see Mrs. Heffron in the in the back there. And for those that don't know, I started in the district as a school counselor, the high school. When I moved into administration, she took my spot at CNS, and so there was a transition there. I see people here from Gillette because I was assistant principal there and House One. I see some of the people back there that those were the growing pains of being young as an assistant principal, running all over the district. And then I see people from Roxelle as a elementary principal. And so the many different areas in the district that I've been in and then came down to the district office as a director of elementary education and then assistant superintendent. And it's a it's a pleasure to see so many wonderful faces over the lifetime of being in North Syracuse. And I will tell you, I would not change a thing. I learned at each location. They made me a better counselor, a better administrator. And there are so many wonderful people in the district, and I'm looking forward to the continued growth. I'll be watching from the sidelines, so but thank you.
So if we want to, Paul?
Well, I have I have something to read on behalf of Thomas Willis. He was our previous ex-official student. He's not here, right? Okay. No, well, careful with the hair comments around me. So these are my words, and so excuse my voice, too. It's failing me. It's truly an honor to have served with Superintendent Bowles on the New York, North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education. Before my term, I was already well aware of his commitment to the school and community. But being on the board brought my awareness to the next level. The passion Mr. Bowles has for the excellence within our district radiates in each and every one of our meetings. From the awards he gives along with the president of the board to the highlights he shares with every report. Likewise, his determination to continually improve our programs, our schools, and to provide for the varying needs of our district is commendable. Attending various attending various board functions with Mr. Bowles and especially to the Bosie's Program Tour, I realize just how personable he is to each and every person he works with and talks to. Getting to know Mr. Bowles throughout my senior year was a pleasure and has inspired me to continue to try to have a positive impact in any community in which I live. Such big shoes to fill, I hope that the next superintendent will be as passionate and dedicated about our North Syracuse Central School District community as Mr. Bowles has been. Thank you for taking the time to read out this letter. I guess that's for me. And thank you, Mr. Bowles, for everything you've done to help the North Star shine. Thomas Willis II. And since my microphone's still on, can I continue talking? I'll make this brief, but I just want to just thank Dan for service, obviously. I will say, for whatever reason, I ran for president in 2019. So I started my term the same time Dan started his as superintendent. And it was an awesome year for about, I don't know, eight, nine months or so. And I was walking through the mall one day, and my phone rang. I was kind of scared to be at the mall because stuff was going on, and that's when Andy had called and said that they were shutting down because the guy that runs the county there, the county executive, I didn't need his name, but was shutting us down, and we were preparing to shut down for two weeks. And then everything was going to be okay, and it wasn't. And so that was an eye-opening in March of 2020, I believe that was. Wow. And I'll come back to where I was going with this. It was it was, I think we're luckier than most people know. I think that a lot of people know, and I hope they appreciate in retrospect, that we had Dan at the helm during that time. He has this keen and innate ability. It's just really part of his counseling background, I think, but I think it's something that's just part of his personality, to look at black and white and be able to see the gray. And he's that gray in situations like COVID that we went through, but also in situations when we're dealing with issues around the school district. And when he looks at that gray, I think in the front of his mind is always what's best for the school, what's best for the students, what's best for the community. That is that is a something you don't get in every leader. I know that, and I'm sure those of us who've worked in education know that. And that's something I hope we can find because I believe that's something that North Syracuse culture embraces and needs. So I thank you for being that person, just just who you are. And I was it was truly a privilege to serve with you, such a privilege that I quit as soon as I heard you were retiring. So thank you for that also. I just hope, what is it, the 27th of August? Is it last day? So when when you wake up that next morning, I know you'll feel weird. It's an empty feeling, but I'm sure you'll adjust when up to come here. So but come visit. All right. Thank you.
I'd like to chime in if I can. I've been in administration for 30 years. I started off young. And I have to tell you, probably in administration, I might have of colleagues, administrators, one friend over 30 years. I have this theory that people get into positions of power, and here I'm an administrator. This is like so bad to say. I promise I'm not one of these people. That people get in positions of power. You could see it in politics. You could see it, you know, police. You could see it in education. And they misuse that power because if you have the need for power, then you shouldn't be in a position of power. And unfortunately, that's happened in my journey a lot, and I could probably talk to educators, and unfortunately, it happens too often. Dan is an exception, and I could tell because I'm pretty picky. Remember, I got one friend over 30 years, okay? That's an administrator. Lots of teacher friends along the way. But Dan is that exception, and I've told him that before. His counseling background has served him well in this position. So I know a couple of people around the table have mentioned, like, do we realize how lucky we are? Because especially in education where we have to enrich the lives of kids, if you are not, if you're working in a toxic environment, and that's what bad leaders cause, toxic environments, that trickles down to the kids. So it is so important on who's at the helm, being a truly nice person. And I am truly sorry to see him go, but I'm so happy for him. I don't know how anyone could be a superintendent. I mean, you're telling me you're doing five o'clock meetings. You're here. You're there. You're at like, when do you sleep? When do you have a life? When do you? You're going to enjoy your life. I'm so happy for you.
Trying to keep up with Mr. Crabtree. And wherever I go, they're like, oh, yeah, Bob was here.
Can't do it, Dan.
Hey, this is so much stuff. I've known Mr. Bowles for over 20 years, so I believe I have known him more than most of the people on this board. I was a teacher, an elementary teacher, and I saw his leadership skills when he was principal at Roxborough Elementary. Mr. Wenham was the assistant superintendent. He asked me to be on a committee. And I remember going into Dan's library, and he goes, look at Bob. Look at that skyline. Look at this place. He was so proud of his building. Later, he became director of elementary ed, and so he would come to Cicero Elementary, and he would visit my classroom. And he, again, cared very much about the students. I just want to go through some things because he's done so much in his five years. So Paul mentioned COVID. We couldn't have asked for a better superintendent to lead us in COVID. I was scared. I was frightened, and he was our leader for the board and for the community. I saw meals every day at Allen Road in the morning for families, virtual learning for the teachers to use with their students. But what was the most important thing during COVID? Social, emotional needs. He made sure every building had someone in that building. For years, board members tried to get at least one social worker. He said, we're going to have more than one social worker. He was amazing. Another thing he has done over the years, his strategic plan, other superintendents never had. Where are we going to go from 2022 to 27? He said graduation rates need to go up, and you can tell us, right, Cicero High School, the graduation rates have gone up. We're going to have a reading program. I taught for 36 years, and we never hit a reading program that was used in all the schools. And moving forward, he led that. And again, the emotional program. So when the district, when the schools come here every during the beginning of the year, those are the things he wanted to see. Now we have structure for success. For years, our buildings have not been updated, and he with a team said, we're going to have capital projects. We're going to improve Lake Shore, Cicero. I can go on and on, okay? The fields at Gillette. That's him. That's him leading this district structured for success. In order to have success, we've got to have buildings that are going to be appealing to our students. When I was on the interviewing committee for the community, the one question I asked was about publicity. For years, this school district has done positive things, but we never made the paper. We never made it out there. His thing for the last five years, and you know, everybody in the audience, what is good about North Syracuse? Every week we get something. This is happening. This is happening. That is your leadership with publicity. We all know he's visible. And when he wasn't visible, I had to text him and tell him what the score was at the game. He knows that. Every five minutes, I'd be texting him the score at the football game, whatever. Technology. Before he got here, we didn't have very much technology, and he led us in that. Rising Stars program. That is an amazing program at Roxborough Elementary and Middle School. It's not just for the students. It's for the parents. The parents can come in and get clothing and food. I could go on and on, but I am going to miss you as a friend. You've been there for me when I shout, but you've calmed me down. And then one last thing. I'm on the And then one last thing, I'm on the school board for OCM BOSI's, and I've met most of the 23 superintendents. I know them because I've worked with them. Never heard anything other than praise for your superintendent. So when I go to a meeting and I'm with West Hill, and I'm with Liverpool, and I'm with, they go, "You have the best. You have the best superintendent in OCM BOSI's." Thank you, Dan, for all these things that you have done for this district.
Just adding one comment, Bob, and that one comment is, "We have the best." All the people out here that work in the district, because without them, I can't do any of those things. So that would be the one correction, we have the best.
Thoughts on the board? We're good. Well, Dan, again, thank you, I know you're going to enjoy your retirement. Long time coming. I do hope that you stay, I, I know you're staying in the community, so I do hope we see you around. Do you have anything else before we close out your last meeting?
I'm going to say this, and I'm going to embarrass my wife. It may be two weeks, it may be a month, but she may be calling you saying, "Find something for him to do." Because at, at the pace that we work here, I think I'll be driving her crazy in short order, so bear with me.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Xavier, Paul, all those in favor? We're adjourned. I'd like to invite everybody here to go across to the.